Okay, welcome, everybody. Danielle? Thanks, Danielle. So again, tonight, we have a public hearing which is open from the 1-8-2024 meeting. It's still open. Local law of the town of Marlborough, Ulster County, New York amending various provisions of Chapter 155 zoning of the Marlborough Town Code as follows. Amendment in Section 155-31 Site Plan Review and Section 155-41.1 Ridge Line and Step-Slope Protection. And we're keeping that open tonight. We'll get to public comments right after we do the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And please remain standing for a moment of silence for all the men and women who sacrificed their lives to give us the opportunity to serve our country and our town. Thank you. Okay, so, again, we're here for a public hearing in the beginning of our meeting for zone changes to Section 155. And I assume most of you are here because of that, which is great. So I'm happy to see everybody here, and I appreciate all the feedback we've been getting. So anybody who wants to come up can come up one at a time. Just hold your comments to three minutes and state your name and address for the clerk, and we could start. Whoever wants to come up first? Anybody? Come on up.
Hello?
Hi, Melissa Quimby, Mount Zion Road, Marlborough. I don't have a comment as much as a question, because I didn't want to get too invested in this if there's been any changes at all. But thank you very much for responding to my letter earlier. And you indicated that you may add wording to say that the roof line must be under the ridge line to make sure they understand structures cannot be put on the ridge. Has there been any changing of the proposal?
No, we haven't made any changes until we get all public comments back. And then the board will have discussion based on all the public comment and our comments. And then we will then meet, I mean, talk through email. And then I will talk to my attorney to figure out how we change the wording.
Awesome. Thank you.
Gary, come on up, Gary.
Paperless. Howard would be proud from his tenure. Gary Lazaroff, 539 Old Indian Road. The numbers don't go much farther than 539 Old Indian, by the way. Supervisor Corcoran, board members. Just to be clear, I'm here in no official capacity, although I'm immersed in town business and our code well beyond my normal work week. I don't make a habit of speaking or even attending board meetings, as we see enough of each other. But like 95% of the town employees, I not only work here, but I live here in town. And I'm afraid I only know about these proposed changes because of my everyday involvement. And I'm afraid there are many landowners in town that are in for a rude awakening if they go to apply for a simple building permit and find out the hard way about the ridge line and slope ridge regulations. After some of the comments at the last public hearing has had me wondering, as I make my way home every day, about halfway up Old Indian Road, as I crest the hill near Fino's Farm, what those against the ridge line code changes think when they see my house up on the mountain? The one my great aunt built in 1939, almost 40 years after my family moved to our farm on the ridge? I wonder how much it bothers them compared to the wind tower that sticks up high above the ridge? The one that keeps my neighbors and myself up at night anytime the wind blows? Is that tower more visually appealing than another house or two on the ridge? The so-called ridge that maybe doesn't even fit the definition of one? Let's be honest, we're not talking about the Catskills or Adirondack High Peaks. We're talking about 1,000 feet of elevation. That 1,000 feet is only relevant because of its proximity to the river, just four miles for such an elevation change. On our end of the so-called ridge is not narrow as the definition defines, but rather one slope that is somewhat steep with a large level area on top. The broad and vague language in the code would leave almost our whole property unbuildable. Even if one home were to be constructed on a 20-acre lot, the code would prohibit us from doing so, because there would be no way to build 50 feet below its highest point. What I'm getting at is our ground is too flat. Yes, on the ridge line, too flat to build according to the code. That's without even touching on the point of being visible from below. Why do we suffer restrictions on standing out on the hillside? I'd argue the view is better from the top looking out, rather than looking up at it. Why don't we restrict building on our riverbanks? Where the land is steeper and closer to a natural resource we could potentially harm? Is it because they're not visible unless you're on a boat or crossing one of our bridges? Those restrictions would probably stop the bayside development, even though that's where it belongs on the 9W corridor with municipal sewer and water. Where do we stop with blanket restrictions? I've also heard the argument that we're bringing in tourism via the Milton Landing with cruise ships and taking these guests to see our town rural landscape, which I'm 100% in favor of. But the first thing they see when they get off the boat is our sewer plant, followed by Brooklyn Bottling Sewer Plant. I don't think they mind seeing my house, or maybe one or two more, on the ridge. Let me also mention that these restrictions may force a different avenue with our land. Do we build tall barns or maybe greenhouses? As ugly as can be. Be able to see them from the far reaches of Dutchess County, sticking up on the mountain, all under the agricultural law, that would be perfectly acceptable in our zone. Maybe solar panels? Green energy? So many that every plane that takes off out of Stewart Airport circles over, sees the glare. I don't think that's better than a house or two. Currently, we have the fifth generation of my family living on our ridge line compound. But as of now, all the residual land we have is unbuildable for the current and future generations. I'd ask that the ridge code be scaled back tremendously or removed altogether. Let the topography determine if development can occur. There's no 1-acre lots scattered across the ridge, mostly large parcels that would face extra scrutiny anyway from the planning board. Don't restrict the landowners that have held these parcels that are perfectly buildable for their future generations. Don't lump a single home build with a large subdivision. I'd also mention the exploratory well the town was working on not far from my house. If the well had proven viable, the ridge line code would have prevented even a 10-by-10 pump house from being built near the well, not to mention a half-million-gallon tank. I understand we may be exempt from the code for official use, but worth mentioning. I'd also mention that we don't need the water even at our 1,000 feet elevation. Our shallow wells run over when the water table is high. Few new homes aren't going to pull the water from out from under us. I could go on and on, as my family has lived and farmed on the so-called ridge for well over 100 years. But I'll leave it at this. I just drove home this afternoon from our camp in the Tug Hill region of upstate. Overall, very restricted area with tons of forever wild and conservation easements. Our house sits at 1,800 feet in elevation. There are no building regulations besides frontage requirements and normal setbacks to build anything you want, wherever you want, at almost twice the elevation we have here in town. One would think it would be a metropolis, but similar to our ridge. Here, there are no small lots available, and subdivisions are regulated enough already to deter overbuilding the area. I apologize, I know I've been all over the place with my comments. I've had a few weeks of it being on top of my mind, lots of time to ponder, whether it's been the long riding back and forth to camp, or the many hours I've spent in the last couple of weeks going up and down Old Indian Road, Mount Zion Road, Mountain Road, and Reservoir, plowing, sanding. I've been up there a ton these last few weeks. My opinion, the current town board is more for property rights than property restrictions. I'd ask that you follow through with at least the proposed changes, and consider further loosening them. Don't back down. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up.
Carrie Santini, also, lives on Mount Zion Road. As a lifelong resident of the town of Marlborough and an owner of property within the ridge line, I have some thoughts and feelings about the protection of our beloved ridge line. I do understand the need to protect it, but at what cost to your residents? I attended the last public hearing on the matter, as well as one of the two meetings held by the CAC, and heard the concerns. But I believe that our current law does not take the property owners and their rights into consideration. The Fifth and Fourteenth Amendment of our Constitution protect our right to own property and to use it as we see fit if it does not impede on the rights of others. From all of that I've heard, one of the main concerns for protecting the ridge is to protect the views for others, in which case, the town should then need to compensate the owners of the land affected, as they are taking away the right for right of use of said property, but to benefit others. What good is the right to own property if all the rights to use it are taken away? As with eminent domain, if a governing board physically ceases property for the better of the public, the landowner needs to be justly compensated. The same should be if given rights of the property are taken away for the better of the public. As for the environmental impact of building on the ridge, I do not believe that there are, I do believe there are better, more efficient ways to protect this than telling property owners where they can or cannot build a home on their own property. The town code already has laws in place to control runoff, erosion, and property setbacks. It also includes the steep slope regulations to protect the sides of the ridge. All of those are in place to limit what and where one could safely build upon the ridge. If all the codes are being met and a home is going to be within the tree line, what makes it any less safe to build on top of the ridge versus on the side of the ridge? I do not believe that it, that it is a fair restriction to say that a home cannot be built atop the ridge if it is meeting all of the other property setback laws that are in place. A number that keeps getting brought up is the 7.5 miles of ridge line, and how we lessen the protection of this. And how if we lessen the protection of this, we could end up with hundreds of houses on that 7.5-mile ridge line. That just simply is not true. As a person who regularly explores the ridge, there are very few buildable areas. With areas that would be buildable on top of the ridge, many would cause less disturbance than clearing and prepping a site on the side of the ridge. If the steep slope only has to be disturbed to put in a driveway, the site can be remedied much quicker than if it's disturbed for the full construction process. Another topic that keeps getting brought up is protecting our ridge for future generations. As was mentioned at the last public hearing, a majority of the people with an opinion, or at least that show up and voice their opinion, are in the older generation, 50-plus. As a person of the middle generation, which I'm calling 25 to 50, I would technically be one of the future generations. And in my opinion, people of my generation would like to grow and expand our community, and allowing people to build on the ridge would help in doing so. Houses on top of hills with views have higher values, and therefore, higher tax base. Marlborough is already one of the higher tax rates in the immediate surrounding areas, so allowing more high-value homes would increase the income from taxes, allowing for expansion within the town's economic development without raising taxes more. Estimating that about 30 people attend the public hearing on this matter, and the population of the town is about 8,800, you are only hearing the opinion of about .03% of the population. I feel that if you really want a true opinion of how the townspeople feel, that the, that the issue should be held to a public referendum.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Mickey?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. I am Mickey Simonovsky, 75 Orchard Street, Marlborough, New York. I'm also speaking as the Chair of the Conservation Advisory Committee tonight. I want to thank the board for giving us the opportunity to do a PowerPoint presentation. I really do appreciate that. I think it will help everybody, all together, the public and the board. But tonight, the CAC has held two meetings in regard to the ridge line protection law. And at those meetings, public members have voiced their comments and questions. The CAC is working on a final report, but in the meantime, it is our recommendation that the board continue to investigate wording that will enhance and strengthen our code. The comprehensive master plan clearly refers to the ridge line as one of the town's strongest assets, both visually and economically, as its integrity to the continued success of our farmlands, the town's biggest economic driver. We heard so many members of the public speak to this. And the consensus above all is that the code, as one of the CAC members wrote, needs to be updated with more succinct language, better definitions, and a clearer explanation of how the Marlborough Mountain Ridge Line Protection Overlay Zone or MAP is to be used. A strengthened code will play safeguards and directions for the protection of the ridge line, while giving applicants, landowners, the town planning board, and enforcement officers the guidelines to follow to ensure proper development and land use outlined in our comprehensive master plan and its updates. The CAC would continue to assist the town board in this regard if the board desires. In the meantime, this full account is being developed, along with a PowerPoint presentation to be presented February 12th. Once again, I respectfully request that the public hearing remain open until the CAC has presented our findings for your use, and I ask that this report be included in the minutes of the meeting. Thank you for the opportunity to assist the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Mick. Mr. Quimby?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Douglas Glory, 182 Reservoir Road, Marlborough. I've got a comment and a suggestion. My comment is, the town of Marlborough has proposed changing the 18-year-old Ridge Line Protection Law. The law was born out of a 2002 master plan to protect the natural beauty asset, the Marlborough Mountain Ridge, Ridge Line. The town board has proposed to remove the no-build clause with 50 vertical feet of ridge line. This change would permit the ridge line landowner to build on the ridge. My wife and I recently returned from a visit to Athens, Greece. We were traveling through the city by bus to one of the many archaeological sites in and around Athens. The tour guide pointed out that there are no, nearly no tall buildings in Athens, and in fact, the heights are capped by code, so it's not to block the view of the 2,460-year-old Acropolis, a UNESCO World Heritage Site. I want to make a comparison between the Acropolis and our original line. Let's say Dimitri owns land in Athens, and he wants to construct the building. He has the city building inspector to visit his site, seeking approval for his project. The inspector informs, performs his analysis, includes, includes Dimitri's plan exceeds the city's building height code, as it will block the Acropolis view. The inspector has no choice but to deny the approval. Dimitri believes that he should be able to do what he wishes with his property. His issue moves through the appropriate channels and ultimately ends up at the doorstep of the city council. Do you think the city council will elect to remove the restrictive view clause? How do you think that will go over? The Athens View Code was put in place to protect the interest of the city, citizens of Athens and the tens of thousands of annual visitors. The code was enacted for the greater good of the people of Athens. I feel, in essence, this is no different than our ridge line issue. Our 10,000-year-old ridge line should be worth protecting. Now, I have a suggestion which might help with, with the law, however it ends up being. And the board members have a copy of this. And some of you see me present this at the CAC, but I'd like the public hear what I have to say. And I'll skip part of it. So I'll say, for the record, I am not opposed to a landowner for erecting a, erecting a structure on the side of Marlborough Mountain. And I am not opposed to the fact that it will likely be visible from points east. I have no problem with that. I am, however, sensitive to structures which could be built on or near the ridge line. I'm saying "the" ridge line, not a ridge line, "the" ridge line. The current code protects this aspect. The code does need wording changed, remove ambiguity. The board may be leaning towards keeping the 50-foot elevation clause in some form. Assuming this to be true, I offer these comments. I met with the building inspector on January 19. I felt it was likely Tom would be sharing his insight as to how the law could be worded. The wording needs to be clear so that he can render a defendable position, decision. And we all know about the tree line versus the ridge line problem. We already discussed that. The sentence the board wishes to remove, "No structure," quote, "no structure that is subject to this section shall be located closer than 50 feet in elevation to the ridge line." And here's the key word, "affected by the application." Very unclear. "As determined by the town engineer." I asked Tom how he interprets, quote, "affected by application," unquote. He must select a reference point to, to determine the 50-foot requirement to be met. If I understood him correctly, Tom uses the applicant's lot line as his basis. He uses the proposed structure's location, compares it to the most westerly elevation of the lot. I mean no disrespect, but this could be too restrictive to the applicant if he or she does not have enough elevation change on their lot. I believe a fairer way, a fairer test, is to compare the structure's location to the actual original line. This can be accomplished by using the structure's latitude and longitude attributes. One would need an iPhone with an app that gives you longitude and latitude. Latitude is the distance from the equator to the, to the North Pole. We're at about 42 in Marlborough, but you can get the precise location on your phone, right to the third decimal point. And you would need to use the National Geologic Map Database, which tells you altitudes. Now, I have an example here, because people can be confused. So we have the applicant we talked about, that Tom has, right? And this is the ridge line. Down here is the Hudson River, Marlborough, Milton. This is the area we're talking about, 750 and higher. Here's the house proposed to be, to be evaluated by Tom. If, if the applicant has a relative plateau here, and it's not tilted enough, he'll fail. He's still 1,000 feet or so from the ridge. He'll fail. It's too strict. I propose using, our house for example, using my phone, standing near our foundation, and we're about here on this whole map. Bridge is up here, we're down here, where the dice is. Our latitude at that spot is 41.617 north by 74.019 west. I can locate that, that, that location within a few feet. I know exactly where I'm standing. I can stand on my foundation. I know where I'm going to be judged. And if I go to that website I told you about, you can put those same coordinates in, so I know the geological survey where I'm standing are precisely the same. Our house sits at 818 feet elevation. And results are displayed on the screen. Now, I want to compare my location, the foundation, and we talked about ridge, house ridges, you can do that also, with my application, the foundation. I can, want to compare my foundation, where my house is going to be, to the ridge line. So where's the ridge line? Is it there? Is it there? Or is it there? If you use these coordinates, like the latitude, 41.617, that's a definitive line. I can go to the website, take my cursor, I can walk that back to this ridge. I'm 41.17, I'm not over there. I'm not over there. I'm right here. I drag that across there, and I come up with a number, 920. So now I have definitive number. So if Tom has to do this, he can't judge or guess, and using the property line, he falls. He should use his location versus the ridge line. And so I'm saying, we're, we're, we made it. We passed with a buffer. There's no guesswork or interpretation with this approach. The same test can be applied if you want to use top-of-the-roof strategy. More math is needed, and destruction may be allowed to be a little higher on the ridge line. I really don't care necessarily. Is this approach foolproof? Basically, yes. However, one could argue, different vantage points along Latin Town Road or Ridge Road could alter the view. Am I looking from here? Am I looking from here? And I get that. That's where the 50, 50-foot buffer gives us a little wiggle room, so we can all be happy. I'm just trying to be of help here and offer these thoughts for your consideration. I'm sure there are other techniques offering similar results, but at least this one is reproducible. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Glory. Anybody else?
Good evening. After the public hearing on January 8th, I spoke with someone who served on their town board for 28 years. I explained the ridge line protection law to him, as well as the discussion about changing it. And I asked him for his thoughts. He was quiet for a few moments while he pondered it, and then he said, "My question would be, what's changed?" I didn't have an answer for him, because as far as I know, nothing has changed. The Marlborough Mountains are still in the same place they've always been. Residents and visitors are still admiring and appreciating them, just as they always have. And the town's master plan still calls for the Marlborough Mountain Ridge Line to be protected. So if nothing's changed, then the law shouldn't be chopped up or weakened. If the law is vague, as has been suggested, then it should be a relatively simple fix to inject clarity into the language, and once completed, the law will be even better than it was before. There has been discussion of the rights of private property owners, that this law limits their rights, and people should be able to build houses on their property wherever they want. Well, all zoning laws limit property owners' rights to some degree. The 50-foot elevation ridge line building restriction is really a setback, just like the other setbacks in our zoning code. These considerations all must have been part of the discussion back in 2005, when the Ridge Line Protection Law was first proposed. And with the proposal of the new law, there must have also been a public hearing to gather the citizens' thoughts, opinions, and concerns. And I would have found it, but the, what, the town board website only goes back to 2014. So there was likely some deep discussion, and then the law was passed. And again, nothing has changed since then. I understand that the public hearing may be closed tonight. If that is the case, I would respectfully request that you hold the record open to allow time for people to submit written testimony for your consideration. There is clearly public interest in this topic, and since there does not appear to be any urgency for making changes to the law, perhaps an extension until, that would coincide with the date of the next town board meeting would be appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just so you know, everybody, we are keeping the public hearing open to next meeting, so, that's already done. But, and we're going to give the CAC, they've been doing some work for us, they're a town organization, and they're going to do a presentation with all their findings at that meeting. But I would like that to be the final meeting. But we're going to keep taking comments, and if anybody wants to email, they can do so up to that point. So, next, anybody else want to come up? Cindy, come on up.
I am Cindy Lancetto, 198 Reservoir Road in Marlborough. I'm glad to hear that you said that you're going to keep it open, because that relieves me of having to read something. Sina Cutson has sent a correspondence to the supervisor and the town board, and I'm sure he'll share that with them, so that can become later part of the record. They are, they have concerns, and, but I'll let them speak for themselves, and I'll just speak for myself. And I would like to speak to the issue of good planning and the law. I have heard it repeated on a number of occasions, "You can't tell me what to do with my land." As a member of the town and county planning boards, I can attest that, yes, the community can tell you what to do with your land. We are a country of laws, and those laws are instituted for reasonable purposes. 30 years ago, the town of Marlborough adopted land use laws in their town code under zoning. If you read Code 155.5, it says, "This intent of this chapter is to establish a precise and detailed plan for the use of land in the town of Marlborough based on the comprehensive plan, as it may be amended, and other studies and findings. This chapter is enacted pursuant to the Town Law of the State of New York, Chapter 62 of the Consolidated Laws, Article 16, to protect and promote public health, safety, morals, comfort, and convenience, and the general welfare of the people. The purpose of this law is to promote orderly development, to protect the character and maintain the stability of residential, business, and agricultural areas, and to secure and protect open space and recreation areas within the town, and to promote the orderly and beneficial development of the town. If you read the adopted comprehensive plan of 2002 and the update of 2019, you will see that the zoning code laws have changed over the years to encourage development in the areas that offer good transportation, as well as services and infrastructure like water and sewer. The lands west of the hamlets have the preferred use of agriculture and limited rural development. The steep slopes of the ridge lines are under a special The steep slopes of the ridgelines are under a special overlay zone that has been used to protect them from the serious effects of residential development, and that overlay zone has been in place for eighteen years. If the town board has reason to believe they need to change the present zoning protection that the current law prescribes, it cannot lessen that protection. The comprehensive plan is very clear on what needs to be achieved for the benefit of the public health, safety, and welfare. Therefore, simply striking out a buffer or horizontal setback would not mitigate the possible damage to the ridgeline protection. It is clear that the proposed law change is not defendable, and its adoption, as written, would open the town to an Article seventy-eight action. I would ask the town to separate the linked code changes. I would propose that the Extended Site Plan Review Law stand on its own for review and adoption. However, more time must be taken to examine the ridgeline protection law and how it came to be crafted, and how it can be crafted in a way that best serves the community and achieves the aims outlined in the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else's public comments? Oh, is that you back there hiding? Come on up.
Oh, no, DeYoung, one five-seven Reservoir Road. So I know last time I was here, I asked, "Did you guys read the master plan and all of that?" I hadn't read it in a long time. So I went out and read it, and it's really, really clear. And it's only about one paragraph. I don't want to read it to you, because you don't need to. But it's really, really clear. And, well, that's one thing, I just think that, you know, we are a country of laws, and the idea is that we obey them. And we also, if we're going to go revise the laws, we should at least do it in the spirit of the law. And, you know, the master plan lays out the spirit of the law, so I don't think this should have ever happened. Not only that, if you, I go biking on the ridgeline, that's okay, right? But if you realize that, you know, most of that ridgeline is so far above anything and everything to be built, this really is almost a non-issue in a lot of places. So it's just not, you know, I mean, it's hundreds of feet above where you are, you know, and you're very much on the top and in the lane. So, I mean, the fact that this is all like, everybody's crying out, it's like, we don't really understand what the story is, because as Doug Laurie says, "It's really easy to build almost anywhere, because the ridges always be above you." So, you know, I think that what really has to happen is, one, you know, you have to understand that a ridgeline happens to be from, it's a perspective, and that should be taken into account. So there should be, in some ways, developed, you know, the law, in the spirit of the law, it should be clear that, you know, someone doesn't build a big house right in front of things that, you know, that would block that ridgeline maybe, and that might be a good way of looking at the law, and at the spirit of the law, and to realize, that's really what the law is trying to do. And then, you know, what Cindy did was really repeat what's in the two thousand, I think, seventeen addition, you know, but most of the idea of development that, you know, both, you know, and we had to get experts, not just anybody, but experts write these things. You know, if you want to develop the town, and you wanted to keep developing the town, the best thing to do is in an orderly way that has a really clear goal. And it just says that, it spells it out like, you know, it's just English, you know, and you can read it, it's not difficult. And if you do that, you realize it's not about being developed, developing is not about giving everybody what they want. Developing is making sure that by the end of the day, everything's done in a really well way, and that's really what the law is trying to do. So I think that, you know, any kind of decision that comes, you know, comes from your eyes has to interpret what the spirit of that law is trying to do. And if you look at it, every time we talk about agribusiness, and those are buzzwords for really keep Marlborough beautiful so everybody keeps coming, you know, and it's not, and why do they say that? Because it's going to bring the most amount of money, you know, for a long time. I mean, that's the idea. You develop close to town where there's transportation, like Cindy says, and you keep the other places somewhat restricted. That's just, that was in the master plan, and the update is the master plan, and it's like clear as day. And I don't, you know, I just don't understand why the English isn't clear enough for something like this to have happened. That's my only point, that, you know, the law is there, you've got to be really clear about it, you understand what it's supposed to do, and, you know, you're supposed to follow the law. This is a country of laws, right?
Yeah. It's a country of laws that also can be changed, and that's why we're here.
But then, but then, but then, not willy-nilly.
We're not willy-nilly, and we can, we can read English, Yono, just so you know. So let's be clear. We are here to look at what changes could be put into the law to make it a better law, right? That's why we're here. We all could read the comprehensive plan, we all could read what its vision is, but of course, divisions do change over time. What was something that was meant twenty years ago might be something different today. That's why I look at any law, any code, as a living code or living law, and it can be changed. That's why we're here, okay? And we're taking everybody's opinion, not just one side, we're taking both sides, and then the board comes to a conclusion of what we think is best for the town as a whole, not just one side or that side, right? As a whole. And that's what we're doing here today, and this is great. This is what democracy is about. This is why people come out, and they voice their opinions, and we take their opinions, and we try to make the best possible solution out of all of it, right? But the code is unclear. It is, it is very unclear in that one section, Section F number four, I believe it is, one fifty-five forty-one point one. It's unclear, because it has two contradictory statements put in there, all right? So all we can do here is make the law better. We can make it better for everyone, and that's what we're trying to do here. So, yes, Yono, we do read. We do understand English. So I do take that as a little offense that you're kind of telling the town board here, I don't think that helps your cause, by telling us that we don't read English. So I would take that as a little offensive, but that's fine. You're right to say what you like, but it doesn't help your cause, I could tell you that, all right? Anybody else have a public comment?
Hey, Scott, Scott, can you clarify one thing for me? This comprehensive plan, master plan, is it a guideline for the town, or is it a law?
Well, it's a guideline. The comprehensive plan can be changed also. It's a guideline. It's a guideline for what was, it's a guideline for what at the time was meant to guide us for the future, right?
But my question is, is it a? It's not a law.
It's the same thing. It's a living document. It can be changed just as well as the code can be changed.
But it's a town law, though.
It's a comprehensive plan of the town of Marlborough, yeah. But it's a guide to how we're going to actually move forward in our town, a vision per se of what our town wanted to be, right? And so we abide by that through our codes, right? So we make codes that actually coincide with our master plan, per se, right? But same thing, if you're going to change some of your codes, then sometimes maybe you have to edit your master plan, right? So, or vice versa. There's always a change. Look, everybody could be out there having an opinion, but there's a new generation that comes in too that has an opinion too. And if they think Marlborough needs to go in a different direction, then the board has to take that opinion. Not saying we're going to do it, but you've got to understand, there are other people that live in this town that have a different opinion than some of the people that sit in this room, right? And that's what this board has to do. We're trying to take everybody's opinion into account and say, "What's the best we can do for the whole town?" Okay? We're not saying we're making drastic plans here. We understand the ridgeline is a protection that needs to be protected. We understand that, right? I will say this, before two thousand and five, there was no ridgeline protection code. I'd like to have the CAC give me a document to show me how many houses were built on top of the ridge for two hundred years, because that's how long it was, there was no code. Over two hundred years. How many houses were built on the ridge in two hundred-plus years? So, yes, there are protections involved, and yes, there are houses that were built into the ridge. People also got to understand, the code does not say you can't build on the ridge. You can build in the ridge, but there's many restrictions. Number one being the slope restriction, which is one of the hardest. There's very, very few locations on that ridge that you could possibly build right now. And if you do build, you have to have extreme means to be able to build up there. It's not very easy, it's not inexpensive. So we're talking about a very few amount of properties. I personally believe, and this is mine, it's not the board's, my personal belief is, we do got to make it a little less restrictive to a point, because the code was built on a thirty-five-foot house with a fifteen-foot buffer. My theory is, well, what if you build a one-story house that could be ten or twelve feet high? You're still going to restrict the person to be fifty feet below the slope? I don't think that's right. I think it should be off the roof line. That's my opinion. Now, that's just my opinion. Again, we're going to take everybody's opinion, we're going to take the board's opinion, we're going to take your opinion, we're going to take, we're going to take everybody's opinion, and we're going to come up with a really good updated code. That's what we're aimed to do here tonight, so, and into next week. So I'm going to, unless anybody else has, I'm going to read some documents here first, before you get any more comments, because I don't want to forget, because we did get some submittals. And Carrie, I think you read yours, right? So I don't have to read yours. And Melissa, I'm going to read yours, okay? So this is, "Dear Supervisor, Corcoran Board, I'm writing to understand more about your proposal to strike the fifty-foot building restriction along the full seven miles of the Marlborough Mountains ridgeline contained within the town of Marlborough. After listening to several people on the matter, including the present and past town board members and my fellow property owners on or near the ridge, to understand the pros and cons, I am frankly confused as to how it is expected to benefit the town. The ridgeline protection was put into place in two thousand and five to align with the comprehensive plans focused in preserving our town's natural resources as well as aesthetics, both of which contribute directly to our economically important agritourism sector. Stripping the forest and building on the literal top of the seven miles of the ridgeline would have a permanent negative impact on both our natural resources and aesthetics, damaging our agritourism and reducing the money it attracts to our town. It would also have a negative impact on the neighboring properties. The flats on the mountain Zion between the Quimby Farm and Nickland property still continue to suffer from extreme flooding that can last days. I personally experienced damage to my driveway due to erosion and increased flooding. A previous lot of land on Mount Zion Road was being developed contrary to zoning code. I wonder what damage my property could incur should the ridgeline protections be removed? And if I will have to pay for those damages out of the pocket, or will the town have to fix the damages, passing the cost to all the town of Marlborough taxpayers? Since Mount Zion Road is technically a dead end west of Mountain Road, what will happen if erosion and flooding caused by ridgeline construction cause parts of the road to wash out, as already has in another part of Marlborough? Those residents would conveniently, conceivably, end up unable to access their homes or key services, include emergency services, the cost to taxpayers should such a thing happen? Would it be astronomical? What is the perceived benefit to strike the fifty-foot restriction that would make up these cons? I have heard the town board members say that believes that it should be able to do whatever it wants to his own land, but it is really his, or yours, or anyone's view, because I feel extremely confident that if I requested your town board to change the code so that I could build a high-rise building or a low-income housing project on my Mountain Zion property, you would not think, hey, it's your property, she can do what she wants. I look forward to learning the reasons for your proposal and as expected, the benefits to the town of Marlborough. Thank you, Melissa Quimby, Marlborough, New York." Thank you, Melissa. And then I have one from Sinek Hudson. Okay, this is from Sinek Hudson. Read the ridgeline protection law amendments. Dear Supervisor, Corcoran Members of the Town Board, Sinek Hudson is writing to urge the Town Board to maintain the town Marlborough's existing ridgeline protections. It is town code. Similar local laws have been enacted by municipalities throughout the region in our common practice preserving scenic character, limiting construction in areas prone to erosion, and protecting ecologically sensitive habitat areas. We understand that concerns have been raised because the local law contains ambiguous language. Sinek Hudson highly recommends that, instead of removing the protections entirely ambiguities in the current law, be resolved to ensure that the scope of the intent of the law are clearly understood by both property owners and enforcement officials. Marlborough current law is not unusual. Similar elevation buffers are currently imposed by both Armenia and Hillsdale. Other municipalities, including Shawangunk and Osterlis, require construction to remain below existing tree lines or ridge lines, while others such as New Paltz and Asopis combine this requirement with an additional prohibition on construction within horizontal distances of the ridgeline crest. Still, others include Gardner and Blooming Grove, simply limit the allowed heights of buildings in sensitive areas. The current law reflects a strong intent to protect Marlborough's ridgeline and steep slopes for the safety and welfare of the citizens of the town. Removing the specific numerical guidelines currently imposed by the law would risk creating further uncertainty in enforcement and potentially weaken the law protections. Instead, an alternative approach would be to amend the current law to clearly indicate how the fifty-foot difference in elevation must be measured. If this proven is referred to, the vertical difference between the ground and the crest of the ridgeline, and the highest point on any structure, this should be clearly explained." Going to Mr. Glory's point, that's kind of what he's saying. At any rate, the town should gather adequate information before taking any action and amending the law as required by SECR, as a change to the use is allowed to Marlborough zoning code in the area exceeding twenty-five acres. Propose amendment would qualify as a type-one action requiring increased scrutiny and public input. Moreover, we urge the town to review any changes for consistency with the Marlborough's comprehensive plan and local waterfront revitalization program, which discuss both the sensitivity of the town's ridgeline ecosystems and their economic environment and aesthetic value. We hope that the town board considers these comments prior to making a determination." And that's from, respectfully submitted, Jonathan Clark, and he's for, attorney for Sinek Hudson. And I don't think I have any other one. I could read the planning board's recommendations on this part of the code. Get to it. All right. Opinion for a planning board amending one fifty-five dash point forty-one point one sleep slope ridgeline protection. The proposed amendment raised several concerns by the board. The main concern was the effect this amendment would have on the ridgeline in the preserving the topography of the ridgeline, more commonly referred to the Marlborough Mountains. The other concern raised was the proposed inconsistency with the town of Marlborough comprehensive plan by allowing structures to be built within fifty feet in elevation. The planning board requested the town board provide them with a rationale as to why the code amendment is being proposed. Through its discussions on the proposed amendment, the board suggests to reduce the fifty-foot setback to forty feet, instead of deleting it altogether. This was based on a maximum height being thirty-five feet for all zoning districts except H D and I. That was it on there. The rest was the cannabis, I believe. That was that on the plan. Go ahead, Cindy, what do you want? What have you got? Did I miss something?
Well, I just want to clarify, first, how the importance of master plan is, the comprehensive master plan. And that is, the state of New York was concerned that when zoning first became necessary in New York town, that it typically sounded willy-nilly, that there has to be a plan that would be defendable when it came to anybody challenging how you would set up certain zoning districts in your community. So the comprehensive plan is a provision, and then the community makes their zoning according to that plan. Now, if your zoning goes contrary in any way to the comprehensive plan, then you have a problem if you have a legal challenge. But the comprehensive plan for each community is usually done by hiring consultants who come in, and it typically takes one to two years for these consultants to bring the community together. In fact, you participate in most things. I remember when you come to the public meeting, and people get a chance to have their input, what kinds of things are important now, what kinds of things do they want. what kinds of things are important now, what kinds of things do they want to change. The consultants take all of the input from the community members. They take into account all kinds of demographics and, you know, other types of data. They put it all together, and it's mostly a draft comprehensive plan. Then that, then they go back out to the community again, and they have more public hearings, and more surveys, and more public involvement. And then they say, well, perhaps we had to change it again, and this is what we are proposing as a draft to the town. This is what we're hearing the community say. And the town looks it over, and then they, they either say, I think we need some adjustments, or they say, this has gotten a full, you know, involvement of the community as best we can, and we will vote to adopt this, and this will be our comprehensive plan. Now, that comprehensive plan was first adopted in two thousand and two, and has since been updated from two thousand seventeen to two thousand nineteen. And this is typically done, the state would like to see them updated at least every ten years, but more often than not, they're updated every twenty years. But it's not a woolly knelly thing. It's not an inexpensive thing, and...
That's why it's done not every ten years.
And that's why, you know, New York is not a state that allows public plans, except the things that involve taxpayers. So, we can't decide things based on what a community believes this year or that year. But we can make changes in the comprehensive plan probably every ten years, you know, or however long in between your area to update it. But you still have to, the zoning cost to comply with the vision that is noted in, and the recommendations noted in the master plan. So, there is, there is a legal validity in that master plan.
Yeah, it's a, it's still, I mean, it's a guide to what our zoning should be. I mean, that's what, your zoning is built off of it, so, but again, it can be changed. As Cindy said, if you want to change the, you know, your comprehensive overall plan, there's an expense to it, a big expense, and it's a long process. It's not a short process, it's a long process. That's why it's expensive. But I got one more here from the Ulster County Planning Board. For the ridgeline steep slope protection, the town is proposing to remove the restrictions on the structure being allowed closest to the fifty feet in elevations to the ridgeline, as well as the restrictions of disturbance within the fifty-foot area, except for driveways when they cannot be located outside the fifty-foot area. Recommendation, the purpose of this ridgeline and steep slope protection law is generally to preserve the municipality's scenic landscape and to limit visual impacts to the greatest extent practical. The proposed law strips many away of those protections, and most, if not all cases, the placement of the structure on the unobstructed and disturbed ridgeline will create a potential visual impact. The Ulster County Planning Board therefore recommends that only those circumstances where the visual impact analysis include photostimulation and proposed structural, or structures from multiple location is completed, and no visual impacts are determined, that this section of the statue be waived. If a visual impact would be created, the proposal should be prohibited per the current standards of the zoning statue. And that's from our review office, Robert Libowicz, and he's the principal of the planning board of Ulster County. So, that was their comments for the record. And I got the planning boards, I got all my emails. Anybody else in the audience? Go ahead, Joan, come on up.
Well, just a question. In reference to expenses, if an article of seven D H was to happen, does the town have funds to keep that traveling?
Yeah. Yeah, we always have funds for, I mean, not that we ever want to use them, but we have funds. Well, we always put fifty thousand dollars a year away for any kind of unexpected fees like that. But then if there was ever more than that, we'd have to go into our general fund, so, and you never know how much those things can cost, so. But there's always at least fifty thousand there for that. Sir in the back corner, come on up.
Good evening. My name is Dan Heavens. My wife and I own Forty Mountain Road, eight hundred feet of ridgeline, I said before. Appreciate Town Board having us again, leaving the public comment open. I think it's particularly important. I think there's been a lot of excellent discussion from both sides of this, right? Everyone's going to have an opinion. I think it's great that everyone's here and we're talking about this. So, Scott, you had mentioned that you're going to keep the public comment open for another...
One week.
One week?
Two weeks. February twelfth.
February twelfth. So, I would, I would suggest, or urge, that you keep it open longer than that. At least consider it. Why? We're hearing a lot of input, right? We're not the first group to be discussing this, believe it or not. This has come up before, there's precedent. Why don't we take a look at that a little bit more, see what's worked best and what hasn't worked? Rather than try and reinvent the wheel, put something in place that maybe doesn't work, and we have to find out the hard way. So, we all have a bunch of time invested in this, there could be dollars for the town. Why don't we just take a little extra time now in planning and considering things, rather than face something down the road that's a little more costly? Yeah, so I hope that we can do that. I hope that we can think about this a little bit more, just because it's something that could have large effects on the road.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Anybody else? I see a lot of eager faces out there. No? All right, well, then, for tonight, we will end it with that, but I will need a motion from the board to keep the public hearing open on the proposed changes to Chapter one fifty-five zoning of the Marlborough Town Code as follows, and then Section one fifty-five dash thirty-one, Site Plan Review, and Section one fifty-five dash forty-one point one, Ridgeline and Steep Slope Protection. And I want to extend it at least to January twelfth's meeting.
February twelfth.
And I need, I mean, February twelfth, excuse me. February twelfth's meeting, and I need a motion to do so.
I'll make that motion. I'll not read that whole thing, though.
No, you don't have to. Just, I need a second.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so moved. Thank you, and thank you, everyone. If you'd like to leave, you can. I'll give a five-minute break, and then we're going to get to our regular meeting, so, thank you.
What are you thinking then, Mr. ...
About this whole thing?
You were there when that, that this was after you, right?
What?
You were there.
No, it was right before I was.
When did you start?
I started in two thousand twenty-three, two thousand six.
Two thousand six, so it's...
Two years before me.
I think it was, I think it was something like that one over there. Actually, yeah. At the end, it was very, very... That was home running that wide. I thought it was... I didn't know, like, that's something...
Some of it's good, some of it's some good stuff.
I'm a, I'm not a good guy on taking somebody's property and telling them what they can do with it. I mean, if you, if you don't like it, why would you buy the property? You know what I mean?
I think that, you know, when I said...
But we're, like, one person said, this is a small percentage of the people who have it.
I love it. He said, twenty-five, two thousand five, that's a million years.
Yeah.
Yep.
It could have been, it could have been home in half an hour.
Yeah, well, you gotta do what you gotta do.
It's all good, this is good stuff, guys. That's, that's good stuff.
The only problem with everything like this is ninety percent of people are only here because they're against it. People that are for it are not going to...
That's what I was trying to make that clear. There's two sides to it. Like, I had to... I would have had a beef. All right, let's go over here. All right? Thank you. All right, we're going to get back to our meeting. If everybody that wants to leave can go out, we're going to get back to our regular scheduled meeting. I don't forget this, how we set this one.
Oh, thank you.
I was looking for my, my normal agenda, but I have it here. Yeah, but I have the, the amount of the... I have the... That's freaking crazy.
What are you looking for? Hand me your folders.
My agenda.
Okay.
The only reason I'm, oh, there it is. The only reason I'm looking, because I got that number. I need that number.
Just have to turn it over.
Okay, thank you, everybody. So, now we're doing our normal Town Board meeting for January twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four, seven P M. We're going to go right to motion to approve the agenda. I need a motion by the board to approve the agenda for the January twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four meeting.
Not today, it's twenty-second, huh?
Yes.
That's today, January twenty-second.
Yeah, you're right. I'll make that motion to approve the agenda for today, January twenty-second.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Motion to approve minutes from the January eighth, two thousand twenty-four Town Board meeting?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from the January eighth, two thousand twenty-four Town Board meeting.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so moved. Motion to approve the minutes from the January eighth, two thousand twenty-four Cannabis Public Hearing Meeting?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from the January eighth, two thousand twenty-four Cannabis Public Hearing.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and so moved. Authorization to pay the bills, a big one, one million dollars, one hundred and three thousand nine hundred and sixty-two dollars and sixty-six cents. And I will tell you why that's so much, just so, I mean, the board kind of knows, because at the beginning of the year, we have to pay our health care, our pension, our insurance, and part of it's the county tax that we collect. So, you know, just in pension, retirement alone is five hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. So, just so the taxpayers understand what we pay for our employees, five hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars in retirement, the first payment for M V P, a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, town insurance, a hundred and thirty-two thousand, and the county tax we collected was one hundred and seventy-two thousand for this period. So, a big part of that million is nine hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars is just for that stuff. So, just to give you a breakdown, I need a payment to pay the bills.
I'll authorize that.
Need a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so supervisors' updates. As you see, we were continuing our public hearings on some of the code changes we're looking at. We're continuing to look at those, take public comments, and all their questions and concerns, and we will move that forward. Everybody sees that Tomback is still coming along. If you haven't noticed it, it's coming along very well. Some of the people that served on our original committee, I'm probably going to reach out, and maybe we're going to take a little tour before the public gets in there. I want it to be a little more done before you guys come in, but, you know, the painting is done, the ceiling tile's going in, the heating's working, the fire systems are going in. It's coming along very well. I know, went up, I go up there every single day, but I know Jerry went there today, so all the kitchen appliances have been ordered, the conference room, conference tables and stuff been ordered, the, the screens that have been put in have been installed, projectors are being installed, the Wi-Fi is being installed. So, it's coming along very well. So, that's our update there. Just so if everybody knows, in our last storm, the walkway that goes down to the train station was washed out. I did have the insurance company come. We're waiting for our engineers to come and give us an estimate to possibly fix it. But, you know, these storms are just, they don't, we don't have normal storms anymore. We have these washouts. So, it did take out, it come down on Dock Road at the corner of Watson, and it just washed, washed them a lot of it out. So, it looks like almost all the steps are going to have to come out and be redone in a, in a, in a better way, I guess, this time. But anyway, we're working on that, and I did have a tour back up at Old Indian Trail today with Councilwoman Sessa, our police chief, our highway department, and G P I engineering. We are still continually looking, you know, even though I said we're going to more than likely look at putting it as a dead end, we are still looking at possibilities of, you know, still making it north and south if it's possible. So, G P I is going to give me both scenarios. So, once he gives me an estimate of what it's going to cost, I hope, I'll have that for the board next meeting, to ask you to authorize G P I to get us some engineering results of what's the best scenarios to go forward, so. But today was our first meeting, and that came out of because, again, the, the property owner to the north will not give us an easement to utilize their property to go west into the bank, so now we have to do alternatives, and this is the alternative. So, we are moving forward with doing those types of things. Also, met with G P I last week to go over the highway department reconstruction that we're hopefully going to put out to bid in March, and hopefully we get some bids that are actually something we can do. But as the board members know, and most of the people that are probably here know, we do have money in our budgets for this update, so we're seeing what the number is going to come in. But that's on track. They just wanted to get some final questions from us in the highway department, and those were answered, and they're going to put those into the plan and get the whole bid package ready for March. So, and I did have a conversation again with Ms. Henchy's office, Senator Henchy, and I did have a conversation with Jonathan Jacobson about turning lanes and getting DOT to come down and help us out with putting some turning lanes in, specifically by Young's Park, where someone unfortunately died there, and, you know, I don't know how many, you know, I've told them multiple times, how many people does it take to pass away before you actually do something? But it looks like we're going to have to pay for the turning lane. We just got to get a permission from DOT to do it, and then the senator and assemblyman are going to help us hopefully out with some funding to do so. So, that's the conversations I've had with them. I'm actually meeting with Senator Henchy's office tomorrow, and we'll have a further discussion. So, we're going to have an, actually, a Zoom meeting tomorrow and go over that further. But, so we are still working on that front, too. So, that's pretty much what I got as of right now, and we'll move forward. So, presentations, I don't have any tonight. Comments on the agenda? Does anybody have any comments on the agenda as the agenda? Does any board member have any new business they want to bring up?
Nope.
All right. So, workshop topic was open board discussion. I think we had a pretty good open discussion with the public today, so unless you guys have any other discussions you want to bring up tonight. I got one correspondence left. And this is from Marlborough Youth Baseball. This is from Nick Giassante. He's the president of Marlborough Youth Baseball and Softball. And this is what they do every year, because they're going to utilize our field. So, Happy New Year to you and yours. I will forward your request to the board. This is from, then they put it to, please submit the new certificate of liability insurance, naming the town, which they gave us their insurance. And now, it says Marlborough Youth Baseball and Softball is requesting the use of the Young's Field for the year. The request will be annually, let's say, February first, two thousand twenty-four to January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. If you need anything else from us, please let us know. And this is for Marlborough Youth Baseball and Softball utilizing the Young's Park Field, which, if everybody out there doesn't know, that was donated to the town of Marlborough as of about three weeks ago. We took ownership, and so now Marlborough Youth Baseball is asking us, like they do every year, to utilize the field for their season, and that goes from... year, to utilize the field for their season, and that goes from February 1st, 2024 to January 31st, 2025. So I need a permission by the board to allow Marlboro Youth Baseball and Softball to utilize the fields for that timeframe.
I'll make the motion to let them utilize the field.
Need a second? Second?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so moved. All right. You'll let Nick know? I'm sure you'll let Nick know. Okay. Public comments, anybody have any other public comments tonight?
A question. In reference to Old Indian Trail, the property owner, why are they not granted? What's the reason they won't grant an easement?
They didn't give an answer. They just said at this, they said at this, they said at this time, they do not, would not like to grant us that request. That's pretty much what it basically says. There's no reason behind it, it's just that they don't want us to utilize. Now, haven't, you know, we do have an easement already through their property, which is the current Old Indian Trail Road, right? So that's there. What we were asking for is to move that easement 50 feet into the West Bank, right? But again, it's their property, and they have a right to say no, and they did. Just as, like I said last meeting, there's another property owner north, that Central Hudson has asked them to utilize their property for an easement to make that electrical connection better, and they denied that request, too. So, again, we have to have people work with the town and Central Hudson to do these things. If they choose not to, again, it's their property. We can't make them, and then we just got to go to alternative plans, and that's what we're doing. So, again, that's why these things take a long time, and, you know, we pick our brains to try to figure out a solution. So we'll, we'll get there, we'll get there, but, yeah, they won't do it, so... And again, as you know from the last meeting, the adjacent landowner wanted me to forward them that letter, and I did so. So that was sent to them. So they have that letter. So any other public comments?
If you propose to do that to, this is Quicks or, the people who actually live on the next street, there's some sort of financial compensation for their partners?
Oh, from the landowner or the Quicks, or both?
No, doesn't the town reinforce them for use of the...
No, we're asking for an easement. I mean, they could ask us for a compensation if they chose to, right? They could. Usually when you ask for an easement, you know, you just grant an easement, but there's usually no compensation unless they ask.
If they spent a small fortune on this house, it would seem like, yeah, maybe they might take a few tens of thousands for the sake of a road.
Again, I mean, that's, that's the property owners, if they wanted to ask us for X amount of dollars, not that I would think that this board would pay X amount of dollars for any piece of property, because we're just trying to help the matter here, you know, out here. But that's a property owner's right. But when you ask for an easement, there's not typically a month, we don't typically put a number to that for a value, but it doesn't stop the landowner from asking us for something for it, right? But that wasn't even in, that wasn't even in the response, which is, at this time, they choose not to grant that request, and, you know, that's what we got back. So that's why we go to Plan, I think it's C now.
Right, dude?
So, so we'll figure it out, we'll figure it out. But we were up there today, and I'll get some, hopefully I'll get something back for the board next week to see how much it's going to cost GPI just to get us that estimate. So, you know, this is, this is something that's an expense that the taxpayers as a whole have to, you know, pay for, so, well, we'll see, we'll see what that number is. Any other questions? Okay. I don't have any resolutions tonight, which is two meetings in a row, which I don't know what's going on here.
That's okay.
So, Eddie, your time then, Ed.
Yeah, at, excuse me, 8:15 on the 22nd of January, I'd like to call for an adjournment.
I need a second.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so moved. Thanks, everybody.